Janet, we can hear you. So, if you, yeah, and you're so glad that I'm still here, too, right? But Ken is awesome.
I feel like a fourteen-year-old kid that's behind the door right now.
Oh, I've chased people off from up here. So, this is... Ready to go? What's that, Mr. Landon? All right, we'll call this meeting back to order.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Landon is checking the hallway because the applicant for the first application is not here. I don't know if the board would like to move on. Oh, what's the time? Are they all 5:01s?
Yeah, 5:01, 5:05, 5:10.
At 5:05, if you wanted to take the second one, because the first one's not here.
I only have 5:01, 5:10, and 5:15.
I'm sorry, you're right. At 5:10, if you'd like to take the second one, but 5:01 is not here.
Okay.
Sorry. It's up to you. You want to go 5:10?
You want to know any good dad jokes?
It's not 5:10. It's only 5:02. I'm sorry. The clerk will have my head.
Well, we don't have to go in order, right? So, I don't want to make the 5:10 wait. We could do him, if they're late, they can go at the end. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm aware of that.
Brenda's like, what's going on? I was. Do you want to recess for seven minutes, so we can stand at ease?
Recessed. Well, that was actually a few seconds fast, because my watch told said 5:09. Okay. All right, bring this back to session. Bring this meeting back to order. Yes, ma'am? This will be the 5:10?
Yes, ma'am. With regard to CPAAA-2023-00009, do you have any ex parte communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Slaybaugh?
No.
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 Thank you. And, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider two ordinances. And first, the comprehensive plan amendment is an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County future land use map by redesignating approximately 1.6 acres from the medium-density residential district to general commercial district, providing for applicability, providing for separability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And secondly, the Atlas amendment is an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Citrus County land use Atlas map by redesignating approximately 1.6 acres from the medium-density residential district with mobile homes allowed to general commercial district, providing for applicability, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors twice, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And I believe that Ms. McKenzie is here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, good afternoon. For the record, my name's Brenda McKenzie, M-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E. I'm with McKenzie Permitting and Consulting. My address is 7232 East Gospel Island Road in Immerness. And this is Mr. Bryson. He's the owner of the property, and I have the pleasure of being the agent for this project. Mr. Bryson and his wife own Gulf to Lake boat and trailer sales on 44. The property's adjacent to this. They're doing well, and they have need for expansion. They bought the property to the west of them, and already have a permit issued by civil engineer for the property. His property, that's a butt to his business, 400 feet back from 44, which I'm sure we're all used to hearing that, is own GNC. The back portion of these said lots are MDR. So, we're wanting to get his property so that the whole parcel that's adjacent to his property, and the two in the back that are MDR, all have the same designation. We didn't get a PUD for this. A PUD is a planned unit development, usually done by an engineer, or it can be done by a draftsman, or an engineer, or an individual, because we didn't feel the need for that, as we had keen engineering, a civil engineer has already provided a site and engineered, and it has been submitted, approved, and is permitted for this whole entire site. We just would like, you know, we're trying to get the whole parcel to have the same zoning, so that he doesn't have half of his property with one zoning and half of it with another. And I'm sure when staff has their presentation, you'll see the overall from the engineer and what we're desiring to get done today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jen Perkins, Senior Planner for the Land Development Division. The Gulf to Lake marine and trailers business is on the right hand of this slide, and the applicant also owns lots one through seven. The site, the application site is composed of lot seven and the northern 20 feet of lots four through six. The applicant is requesting to change the designation of the LDC Atlas from medium-density residential district with mobile homes allowed to general commercial district, and from MDR to GNC on the future land use map to coincide with the rest of his properties. This is a residence to the north of that application site. And two pictures of the business. Ms. McKenzie alluded to no PUD associated with this request. What that means is that any use allowable in GNC could be developed adjacent to that single-family residence to the north. There was a non-residential site development permit that was approved in May to expand the existing business. That the DRA was placed entirely in the MDR portion, which is that lot seven and the northern 20 feet. The rest of the sites are to be used for boat and trailer inventory, for sales and storage. So, land use change is not required to place a DRA in a residential district. This application is solely a land use and zoning change request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, if MDR is, you can automatically put a DRA there?
Correct.
And there's no zoning required? And if that's their intent, why are we asking for a zoning change?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slaybaugh?
Hi. I forgot your name. I'm so sorry.
Jen, it's okay.
Jen?
You don't see me much here, so it's okay.
Hi, Jen. Nice to meet you. The easement, I was looking through, that they're proposing to get rid of that easement? Between seven and 6:54?
They are not. That is a private easement.
Okay.
So, they are allowed to place that DRA there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My understanding was that easement was for access to property to the west?
It is not named in the deed as an access easement. It is only designated as a private easement.
We're a little discombobulated, because we were closed yesterday, so we're getting briefings a little bit here and there on the fly, instead of having full briefings yesterday, so.
I think what you might be referring to, and I don't know if you can zoom in on your picture, there's a 20-foot drive aisle?
Uh-huh. Was I not told that the property, property to the west is also owned by y'all? By you?
No.
No?
They own, they own...
Just lots one through seven, and the dealership to the right, to the east?
Yes. Open to the public?
Yep. Yeah. I had a five-minute briefing on this. I normally get an hour and a half briefing, so I'm very confused.
You don't have to explain that to me. I'm just saying, what do you mean? They own one through seven, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what were you saying about...
I thought, apparently, that's not the case. I thought he owned, he and his wife owned the property to the west as well.
On the other side of South Ponder Avenue.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 okay. Thank you.
Yeah. This is what happens when we have a hurricane, and I get the five-minute briefing. So, open to the public? Would anyone like to speak for or against this matter? Okay, going once, going twice. Yeah, may she come up to answer questions?
Well, there's no open to the public, so there's no rebuttal.
Okay.
But if you wanted to have her answer questions, it's at the discretion of the chair.
Okay. Does anyone want to talk?
I do.
Commissioner Baze?
I don't know if we have, do I have a pointer, maybe? Okay, so to answer...
Can you give her the pointer?
Ms. Baze's question in regards to why, and to actually not have multiple zonings. Between the DRA and the, and his other parcel, is it 12,000, thank you, is it 12,000 square foot?
Over there now.
Can you see it? Okay. Am I pretty good at it? You might be better at it, Grant. This is the DRA. Then there's a portion from the DRA, it's about 20...
Sixty feet wide.
About 60 feet wide in the whole length. So, that would be MDR for the DRA. But then if you wanted to, any, any of the, this DRA is going to be coming over across that property into this, because they're taking the DRA at this, on this site, and going to be channeling it over to it. So, this whole piece would just have a different zoning. This would be GNC and an MDR, and it just makes the property have the same zoning. And this strip in here with the easement is specifically from that road back just to his property. And the back portion of that 400 feet has MDR, where the front of it's GNC. So, does that make it any clearer?
Yeah, so the DRA takes up about just over an acre of this acre and a half. And in between, on the east side of the lot that we're talking about, there's a 60-foot strip by 200 deep, that would be zoned MDR. Everything to the east of that, which the current lot is, is all GNC. And so, there's going to be this third of an acre in the middle of the property that would still be MDR.
Now, it would be like if we voted for this, it would still be MDR?
No, we're asking it for it to be GNC.
Okay.
If it does not get approved, or the process doesn't go through, then we'll have a third of an acre in the middle of these nine acres that is MDR, adjacent to the DRA that takes up most of that lot. And it was something that was consistent with, 10 years ago, we bought the original lot. We went through this process here in this room. And I think most businesses have requested this as the storage unit beside us has also done it, that for whatever reason, the forefathers deemed 400 feet was GNC, and the rest was MDR. So, a lot of businesses have obviously gone into question about it, as we did 10 years ago.
Yeah.
And once the DRA on that property is relocated to this one, they're going to be having their business back and forth on the property. I mean, there won't be an invisible line like, okay, you can't have your boat or your trailer there. We just get the whole project, the whole parcel to have the same zoning, instead of parcel, this project to have different zonings on its property.
And when is the zoning across the road to the east?
Across 44, or where the...
No, to the, just next door.
Across Thompson?
Uh-huh.
I believe it's industrial.
So, that's all...
That is all industrial, and...
Jen said yes.
Yes. And there's, there's a, the property, so it goes probably back, well, maybe a little more than 400 feet. There is a housing unit and large garage.
So, where we're seeing that driveway at the back end of your property, is that residential, or is that industrial?
No, the industrial stops about the tree line. And then there's another property where that driveway goes in. I'm not sure if that's MDR, or, people do live there, though.
It says IMDR. I know, but I was asking about this piece right here.
We're asking about the one on the other side of the...
This, this one back here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, he answered that.
Well, I think history tells us that back in the day, when the comp plan was originally done, the state didn't like the fact that we had more commercial than we needed, so that's why we were limited to 400 feet. than we needed, so that's why we were limited to 400 feet. And now we're either, you know... Part of my angst is, like, either we need to change our comp plan and get, get it back to 600 feet, or we need to do, we need to update it. So, my question then is, since you're not asking for a master plan on this, and if we were, and I don't know this legally, but if, if we approve this, is there anything that holds them to the change to put the DRA, or we just have to go on blind faith that that's what their intent is?
I think what you heard from Jen was that any GNC use could be placed on that property without a PUD.
Okay.
And we do have an issued building permit for it to be built the way that site is shown, just so that, and it's got a permit.
And the expectation is to tie the existing DRA, or actually fill in the existing DRA, and move it over to, that is the logical low-line spot of the, of the nine acres.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, don't go anywhere. Madam Attorney, or Jen, what is the cost to file for a PUD since they already have all of the, so Ms. Cattu, it's like a couple hundred bucks? Yeah. Here's the angst that I'm having. Love your business, we need more GNC, love everything about this, I would love to approve it. The issue is, is that you have every, you've already spent probably thousands of dollars on all the site plans and everything else, I just wish you had done that last couple hundred bucks to do the PUD, because what you can do, if you're a bad guy, which I don't think you are, is you could turn around and sell it to someone else, the GNC. So, and that's why you had not believed, that's why you had almost no vote at PDC, is it was very, I think it was a very tight vote. I really, really want to support this, but I'm having a little bit of a heartburn on that, so I'm interested what my colleagues say. Commissioner Schlebel?
I think you've been a great community partner. I love, I love that this DRA is another buffer between what's behind there, so I'm going to support it. I think that this makes sense as a business owner, and you're growing, and I do appreciate, I, I think that if you were to pull a fast one on us, I'd be very surprised, and don't do that. Because I will support it, you know, just knowing that, what you have done with your business and how you are and your character, and, you know, I mean, I think the citizens need to, to know that this makes sense, you know, we'll probably get backlash, oh, they're changing the comp plan and blah de blah, but this makes sense, because what you're dealing with is from 1989, and we have to move with the time. So I, I am going to support this, and I, I do appreciate what you have done in our community, and it's, it's always a nice-looking business, and you're right there, and want to see economic growth, so thank you.
Is that a motion?
Would you like me to make a motion?
Would you like to move it on? I make a motion to approve application CPA slash AA dash 2023 dash 0009? 09?
Yes.
Based on competent and substantial evidence?
I'm going to second it with commercial on one side, commercial on two sides of the road on the other, I'll second it.
Okay. I would like to clarify that the reason that I have that heartburn is not at all directed at you, it's that we see so many growth management cases right now, and in my mind, I'm trying to standardize how, to some, to some degree, standardize how we deal with this. So, we trust you because you're a longtime business owner and et cetera, et cetera, but there's some legal aspects.
Next time, bring us a PUD.
Please.
We discussed it.
Brenda, listen, please, help, help us help you, okay? I appreciate it, because it's only a couple, I mean, you did, you spent thousands on that already, I know, so, anyway. Anybody else want to say anything? Commissioner Finnegan?
I was fine how you presented it, because obviously you've done business here for years, so I have no worries about that, but worst-case scenario, something happens in your life and you have to sell it, we have to have retention. Even though it's all commercial, they have to put it somewhere, so the county's not just going to let you sell it and have no drainage, so I'm, I have no worries at all with what you're doing.
Any other board comment?
Well, I am going to just weigh in for a couple comments. And I think you can appreciate what we're going through in our county. And, and, you know, when, when you start down this path and you say, I'm going to do it for one, then there's an expectation that you're going to do it for others. I'm going to support this, because when I look to the west of you, that's commercial, I look to the right of you, you've got industrial. Again, I'm looking for more proof in the pudding as to what can happen if you change your mind, because you've been here, you do business here, but not everybody that's coming to us is doing that, so, you know, I want to be on record saying that in the future, if you're here to do business with us, then I want some assurity of what you're saying that you have to do, because I don't, I do not want to get us into a position that we're doing land use changes, and then people, you know, have a change of heart, and they make their money and go on to do what they want to do. So, I, I appreciate everything y'all do, but I, I want to be on the record.
I know, I just thought this one, we had a site plan and permitted that it would have been, you know, in lieu of that, so I understand the value and importance of a PUD.
You just have no legal recourse?
Yeah, I...
Without one?
I just thought this permitted one was in lieu of that, and it was done by an engineer, so I understand the importance, and I appreciate that.
We're all growing together right now. And I'll echo what Commissioner Bays said, I'm, I'm not a fan of going favor, putting it on public record, this is not to be considered carte blanche for folks, so. Any other board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I don't think I stated for the, did I state for the record, motion by Commissioner Schlebel, second by Commissioner Kennard?
I didn't hear it, but I have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next up is CPA 2024 00002, the Cardinal IMA. And at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending Chapter 10, the future land use element of the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan by amending goals, objectives, and policies related to the Cardinal Mixed Use category in relation to the Suncoast Parkway interchange at West Cardinal Street, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. I believe Ms. Cattu is here for the staff report.
Hello, okay, you've already seen this, this board actually transmitted this application to state agencies on April 23rd of this year. The PDC also discussed it and recommended approval with conditions, and I went over all of them, I wasn't planning on showing the slideshow again unless you want to go over it again. There were no changes. You can see in the backup that state agencies had no concerns or no comments. Department of Economic Opportunity is now called Florida Commerce, that's that letterhead in the packet, and they also had no comments. FDOT, which is, this is an IMA, also had no concerns. So, our recommending approval, remember, this is a rewrite by staff of what we had in the books already for the comprehensive plan for the Cardinal IMA. It was not usable, so we did change it quite a bit, and this will allow the consultant that we've hired to now work on the land development code and bring that back before you, so we'll have the nuts and bolts requirements for you, that, once we get this adopted.
Excellent. Thank you. Board?
So, a few things. I, I don't love this interchange at all, but there's nothing we can do about it. I actually, when I sat with FDOT months and months ago, I said, why on earth would you all have put this interchange here and not Grover Cleveland on Cardinal Lane? What wasn't us, it was probably decided like in the 90s, so...
Every seven miles, I think it is, is the answer.
Every seven, yeah. That, that was...
Can't go longer than seven miles.
But they said, if it's a problem in the future, we could put one there, so then that kind of blew that out, so none, none of us obviously made those decisions, so I'm not casting any blame, but I was corrected in my speech, and that says a lot, you know, it's like, when I said, why, why would you put this on Cardinal Lane? And when Mary Jensen was here, I asked her, how are we going to widen Cardinal Lane if all this comes? And I've heard, we can't, we have no property. And then I was recently corrected, oh, they don't call it Cardinal Lane, it's called Cardinal Street or something. It's always been Cardinal Lane, because it's a lane, so I, I have concerns about the traffic, but I, so, so... So we can follow along, since I can't stop the deluge with the paper cop, I understand that. There's some things that I'm, I don't, I don't understand what we're driving at here, and it could be a problem. One, low density is prohibited, it says. Low density would be a fantastic idea, since this actually is a lane, and obviously the county has no, nothing on their radar to, to expand this. But if you look at page 1134 in the backup, under 17.35.4, okay, it's saying what should not be developed, right? So it says neighborhood shopping centers, low-density residential development that would generate unnecessary local traffic on the interstate highway. Okay, so now we're saying we don't want low density, we do want higher density, so putting traffic on the highway, that doesn't make any sense, whatever. And then, 35.4, it's saying no shopping, then in 17.35.15 on page 1167. Did I get the page wrong? I must have. I got something wrong, 11, 1136, my bad. It says, in the last couple of sentences, multi-story residential buildings with first-floor retail office, and a couple other places, it's, oh, and then the second sentence too, community commerce with commercial retail office, so in some places, you're saying no retail, we, we don't want retail, and then other places, you're saying we do want retail. And then the, you know, the low density is actually prohibited, and we're encouraging high density. So my question is, where, what are we doing with all these cars?
Yeah, so let me just correct you just a little bit, I understand what you're saying, so put on the screen there the changes. So right now, there is a minimum density in place of six dwelling units per acre, you can't go lower than that with the current language. The PDC did not support that, they don't want a minimum density, so that was a big change there, traffic was certainly one of the things that they discussed. The other thing is, is there's two separate areas of the IMA, and I, I didn't make that very clear on this particular slide, but there is the economic development target area, which is those areas that directly abut the Parkway, and then you also have the outside of that, which is the mixed use, which is the 1735.15. So it's not that retail's not supported, but the requirement to have retail or have a mix of retail and residential is proposed to be removed. That was something that the PDC and the Builders Association said, hey, it's not the same people, it's very unrealistic to expect it to be combined. So that's why you're seeing the retail not supported outside of it, but for low, low density, especially right next to the IMA, right next to the Parkway. Outside of the Parkway, retail can go there, but it's not required to go there. So I, I think what's being proposed is actually dialing it back quite a bit, there are minimum project sizes and minimum density, and that's changing, or proposed to change.
So still minimum density, so it's prohibited just in the...
It, it's anywhere, this, well, this is outside of the economic development target area, so right now, outside of it, when you don't abut the Parkway, you have to have six dwelling units or more. That's really big, and that came up with Cardinal Farms, which you'll see in a month. Six is too, is a lot, when you're dealing with next to those farms and those really big parcels, so that's why that minimum density is going away. So the, the PDC said, no, no minimum density at all, still allows you possibly to go up to 20 at the max, I don't know if anybody's going to do that, honestly, but it's possible.
So you're saying it's taken away, but I'm reading your draft, and it says that it's prohibited.
The 1735.4, yeah, I understand what you're saying with that. It was trying to say that we really did not want things that were small, small shops, small things like that, or low density. Perhaps that low-density residential development can come out. I agree. That makes more sense, in the 1735.4.
Because I think for people that have to use that, they probably actually prefer that, because again, unless we're going to do something to, I'm still going to call it Cardinal Lane, I just envision some problems.
No, agreed, and so 1735.4, I do agree, the very first sentence, a lot of this was, was picked up from the prior, but the first sentence looks fine, but then the second sentence talks about inappropriate uses which are locally oriented, that probably should be removed. I, I agree with what you're saying, because relative to what the changes we're making throughout, that is a little inconsistent.
I'd have to go back through, by memory, I don't think that was the only place that it said that, but of course, I've read the redline version and the regular one, so I don't know if I've read the same thing in more than one version, or if it says that more times.
Yeah, I, I don't think so, we tried to...
Actually, page five, which is 1135 of our backup, policy 17.15.9, within the CMU district, the following uses are prohibited, and number four is low-density residential.
Right. That's up to you if you want to prohibit the low-density residential, it was, it was now.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to prohibit that.
Okay. Get a consensus in the board, we can take out that and allow low-density, because we did take out the minimum density.
What is the official definition of low-density?
Low-density is usually two units per acre, by right, very low.
Commissioner Bays?
So to make sure that I understand all this jargon that we're saying, as far as in the IMA around the Cardinal Lane interchange, we would go for high-density?
You can do high-density, but right now, you have to have at least six, and we're proposing to remove the minimum six idea. So that you could go low-density, and that's why Commissioner Finnegan's saying the inconsistency there, agreed.
So theoretically, what you're trying to, in my opinion, what you're trying to develop when you have a interchange, when you look at across the state, you want people to be able to access that road. So especially with high-density, they're going to come right out of their neighborhood, they're going to get on that interchange, and they're going to go wherever they're going. So the more that you can put high-density around that interchange, to me, makes a whole lot more sense than spreading high-density out into your community, because they have to traverse back and forth on your county roads to get to wherever they're going, which puts more of a burden on us financially to support that, that network of roads. So, in my opinion, I'm all about high-density around the interchanges, because you're getting people to and from where they, how they want to travel, without having them on your local network of roads that, as taxpayers, they have to support. The Suncoast Parkway, the state supports it, and if you use it enough, you get a 60% discount. So, that's my two cents.
Essentially, if you are removing the six dwelling units per acre, minimum density, but prohibiting low-density, and low-density is two dwelling units per acre, then all you're doing is changing six to three.
It, whatever fits there.
More or less.
So, so, right, so I know practically with one that's coming before you, it's about four, and that worked for them, but they are, they are abutting five and 10-acre parcels, so that's... So that's the drawback is exactly where this IMA, this particular IMA is in the middle of the rural area. It, it's, it's tough.
Commissioner Schleber.
I want the people on Cardinal to use this interstate highway. So this says that would generate unnecessary local traffic on the interstate highway. So I agree with what Commissioner Baze is saying. Um, how we get there is another, um, you have to look at this verbiage, but we want them off Cardinal and on the Parkway. So I agree with Commissioner Baze.
Look at me, but, um, I, I don't have a problem. Like I said, the second sentence in 1735.4, I think it is a bit inconsistent there. It's up to you if 1715.9, if you want to have low-density residential prohibited. Right now, as proposed with the revisions, it could be allowed.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Low density does not fit in an economic development area. So get us there if you could.
Okay, though that's, that's where it's in there. That's why 1715.9 prohibits low-density residential.
May I ask what page 1715.9 is on?
1114 of 1167.
Thank you.
Oh, I see it on 1135.
Yeah, it's 1135. I think that the, the red line.
I think my point is regardless of whichever way they do it, it's, it doesn't make sense. The wording is still very inconsistent. But ob- obviously if they live there, yes, we want them to use the Parkway, but they're going to be coming in to Homasasa on Cardinal Lane also. Um, and nobody is looking at Cardinal Lane. We don't have, when I have property on the sides of Cardinal Lane is what I was told by a former Public Works Director to even widen that a little bit.
May I?
I was, I'm going to go after Commissioner Baze.
Well, again, we're in the infancy stages of developing a plan. I mean, that, that's why we're at where we're at today, that, you know, the, it would have been great uh, when this all started back in the eighties and nineties if, if every board up here was talking about it. But I will tell you, I will never forget, we had, um, was it Janet Small, the lady that, that was the cost citizens against, whatever it was, against the Suncoast Parkway? And there, and there was such a, uh, outpour of absolutely not in my backyard. So everybody just ignored it. They just pretended like it was never going to happen. It has now happened, it is here. And this is part of the planning process. Again, I think if you took Cardinal Lane and you take Homasasa Trail and you look at the two, every road, every intersection off the Suncoast Parkway was never developed at that time into major arteries. That's where you have to look at where is the lowest cost connector to, to being able to buy properties, to widen and get you where you need to go. And Cardinal, I think, happened to be it, plus it probably met that seven mile rule or whatever it was. So you don't want to have to buy. If you went down Homasasa Trail, you'd have to buy out a lot of property to develop it. Cardinal Lane's not necessarily like that.
Homasasa Trail wouldn't make sense, but Grover Cleveland.
Oh, that's what I meant, Grover Cleveland. Anyway, I, I, I think that's kind of why we're there. Um, this is a planning tool of how that's going to plan. Of course, again, this goes back to what I say all the time. We have got to start putting money aside for capacity issues. This is one of them. Cause it's going to happen. I mean, we're going to hear something in a couple of weeks, you know, about a development potentially going on. You know, we can't just bury our heads in the sand and pretend like it's not going to happen because it is happening. And it's, it's knocking on our back door. So I think our, the best thing that we can do is plan the best that we can. Try to make sense out of it and try to, to preserve as much of the nature coast and be very pragmatic in what we approve and disapprove. Just like the, the applicant just before us. I'm not happy about approving something based on a promise. That's why I always want to see, I want to hold them accountable. And I do feel some comfort in that, the fact that that particular person has been a long-term, partner in our community and I think they've done a very good, um, job with their business. So I feel some maturity in that. And if we get hoodwinked, shame on us. But in the future, I do want, I, I am pretty adamant about seeing of us very detailed plan that's going to hold people accountable for what they're doing. But this is a planning tool to help us get there the best way that we can. It's coming. Cardinal will be for Lane one day all the way through and it's just a matter of time. Just a matter of time. And you know, and honestly, we talked about this, somewhere, some meeting I was in just recently, um, oh, I think it was the Springs Coast Steering Committee. Once the Suncoast Parkway is fully developed out to 19, what will that do to 19, once you start moving all that through traffic off and it gets onto the Suncoast Parkway and they're not setting at every stoplight down 19? So now you're not going to have the same oil and gas runoff. You're not going to have the air pollution control that you currently have. The Suncoast Parkway, in fact, the tolls have almost doubled since it opened up to 44. And I think there's, there's a lot, a lot to be said about the Suncoast Parkway. It's a, it's a love-hate relationship, but it's here. So let's, let's plan for it, let's do the best that we can and move on.
Well said. I do want to say that, um, I actually did talk about Cardinal quite a bit. Um, since 2018, my first two years in office, I talked to Randy Oliver about it. We'd had many conversations. And this is a situation where this board inherited the Parkway coming through and trying to do the best that we can with what we've been dealt. So if we can do what Commissioner Baze is saying and get it off the local roads and onto the Parkway, we're going to be in a better situation. But, um, I, I do think that there's a little bit of confusion with the verbiage, but, but our, my goal is to get it off Cardinal, onto the Parkway and to make sure that, um, the, the EDA is, makes sense. That economic development area makes sense and we're putting, putting the right things there that can get the people onto the, onto the highway, not onto Cardinal. And, and again, I don't think any of us are thrilled about this, but we're trying to do the best that we can with what we've been dealt. So, um, I agree with Commissioner Baze again. That's all you're going to get, that's the last time I'm going to say it.
Highest density close to the Parkway, yes.
Well, if we're doing the best what we can, we're going to need to clean up the language. So if we are, so the language says we don't want to put more traffic, local traffic on the interstate highway. I feel like we want the opposite. We do want to put the local traffic. That's what I'm talking about. Some of these things are not working. And it says we don't want, that's fine if you don't want low-density residential, but it says no neighborhood shopping centers. Well, everyone's saying economic development. To me, it's going to be a bunch of housing. So if there's housing there, we may want a grocery store out there so they're not all driving down Cardinal Lane, trying to go to Walmart or Publix in Homasasa. We're trying to keep the traffic pushed to the interstate. Um, I don't know that we should not allow, like I said, a grocery store or something else that people living in that area. I mean, restaurants are allowed, so that's good. So if they're living there and they're using the Parkway a lot, maybe they can eat something there, get some groceries there. Um, I'm sure there'll be a gas station out there eventually. I don't know that we should ban certain things if, if we're allowing all this high density. And please fix the language where we want the traffic.
So I think you're talking still about 1735.4?
Yes, the very last sentence, it says that we're not doing neighborhood shopping centers and things that would generate unnecessary local traffic on the interstate highway. You don't, I don't think that's our intention, right? We want to put local traffic on the interstate.
Right, again, a lot of this is existing and reordered and tried, I tried to make it actually clearer, but apparently on this one I did not. I'm, I'm fine with removing that entire sentence if that's confusing and just leaving it as non-residential uses should be related and supportive of interstate highway functions.
I'd like that.
And then period, and that's the end of that policy. That wasn't meant to be confusing.
Does it ban grocery stores anywhere else? I don't think so.
No, actually, um, within the EDTA, it talks about travel centers, restaurants, hotels and travel accommodations. That's right next to the Parkway. And then 1735.16 talks about general commercial, including retail restaurants, et cetera. So that's outside of, directly onto it. So I, I think they'd be allowed, but that would most be encouraged outside of that EDTA, not right on the Parkway. So I think if we take, take out that sentence, that might clear it up. Thank you. I know it's a lot. You're going to see this again at the LDC level with the real, real less simple. It's once we can get this passed so they can, they, they have some good guidelines. Right now, it's, there is not usable.
Can someone remind me if I did public hearing yet?
You didn't.
Thank you. You've sat in this chair, you know how it is. Shall I do that now? You done?
I'm sorry, absolutely, yes, thank you.
Going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for or against it?
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. When I read through all of this, I, I have a lot of questions and I say, you, you ask them now. We do want this to be a high-density place like apartments or townhouses so people can get to and from work and get on that highway. And yes, they're going to need grocery stores. But with all the changes that you're proposing, I think before you agree to accept everything, that you have it rewritten completely again and brought back so that you can see a clean copy of everything you've discussed. Because yeah, you've got really good points. We do want everything right the first time. This is the time when it has to be right. Because this is not the only thing going on on Cardinal Street Stash Lane. Okay, because right now it is two, two lanes. It will become four lanes. It will become a major, major road to get to and from places. Okay, CF is right down the road from it. You get off that exchange, the next big road up is Grover Cleveland and you got CF right there. So we're going to be picking up not just workers, we're going to be picking up college students. And to get them into small apartments or, or townhouses would be really nice for them. So it's not just going to be stuff going down to Cardinal and 19. You're also going to be picking up a lot of other things. We want to get more medical people here. Where are the medical people going to move into until they can buy property and build? Or, and make sure that their businesses, uh, you know, are thriving? So before you, you know, I, I would say keep going the way you are with getting the wording properly. But get it rewritten before you say, well, yeah, I like that, you know? Like what you like, but get it rewritten, thank you.
All right, close the public hearing. I don't, I'm not hearing that it needs to be rewritten. I thought that there were very specific changes that you had in mind if you want to.
Right, it's a complete rewrite from what's in there right now. And, and other than Commissioner Finnegan's point about 1735.4, which is somewhat inconsistent.
You said it's, is or is not?
That one sentence. I think we've removed that one sentence from that policy and now it would, it would not talk about inappropriate uses. Agreed, that was a remnant from before that should have been removed.
And what about the minimum density?
I think the consensus is to keep low-density as a prohibited use on the CMU is what I'm getting from four of you.
But the six dwelling units per acre is coming out?
No, that, uh, low-density residential that's prohibited right now in 1735.9, it, it sounded like more of you want to keep that in as a prohibition.
But there was the other issue of six minimum dwelling units.
Right, that's already, that's already out, yeah. I don't think any of your question.
So the only two changes are, actually, there's only one change because we're keeping, okay.
Right. So. I mean, there's a ton of changes from existing, but from what y'all have seen before.
This needs to be, um, read into the record, that's all, so.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman. Um, Joanna, this is a rewrite and this is why you presented it so that the Commissioners could go through and find things that were inconsistent like Commissioner Finnegan did. So to say to re, I will not support rewriting the rewrite. Just correct what has been pointed out, so, thank you.
Someone like to make a motion?
I just want clarification. On 35.4, so is it just going to be the first sentence and then everything beyond the first sentence is gone?
Right, the only policy is to say non-residential use is approved within the Cardinal IMA should be related to and supportive of the interstate highway function, period. Nothing more in that policy.
Thank you.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve CPA-2024-00002 Cardinal IMA update adoption.
Second. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Schleber and a second by Commissioner Kennard. And you, um, Madam Clerk, you have the, what she said on record, on what she's deleting?
Yes, ma'am. Do you need that included in the motion or just in the minutes?
I, I think so, yes, I'm sorry.
Please include in the motion. And the second.
Yeah, so, um, amending my motion to include, to delete. I'm sorry, I'm just going to find the page now.
1134 is the page number.
To delete, um, every word and on 17-35-4 after highway function, period. The words past that are to be deleted.
May I read that back, Chair?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve CPA-2024-0002 Cardinal IMA update adoption. And then the motion was amended to delete every word on 17-35-4 after quote highway function, period, end quote.
Perfect, except I think you said three zeros. As long as you have four typed in, you're all good.
I have four, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, um, it's actually, they're, they're dots, not hyphens. 17 dot 35 dot 4.
Did I say hyphen or dot?
I think you said hyphen. Not hyphen, you said dash, dash. It's, it's dot.
Off with your head. Go right ahead.
One quick question.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm teasing.
I'm just curious. Policy 17.35.21, it just says reserved. I was just curious why.
Right, it, it's because, um, if you look at the red line, how many changes there were? Um, the way this worked, 21, it, it's left out. It, all of that language is gone, removed, and rather than renumbering, this is how it worked out. It, it, someday it may, we might put something in. And frankly, when this comes before you for an LDC amendment, we might have some changes to the comp plan at that time. But it's, it's a typical planning thing to, like, uh, later.
For the future.
For the future, correct.
Thank you.
All right, any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we are adjourned.
Sorry, we have to deal with the first application that didn't show up.
Oh.
Oh.
If I.
How do I unadjourn?
Call the meeting back to order?
Psych. All right, call the meeting back to order, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Madam Chair, just for the record purposes, uh, the public hearing that was scheduled for 501 AA-2024-00005, the applicant was not present. Um, staff will work with the applicant and either bring that back or not.
Thank you. Does that, does that include, conclude our meeting?
Does staff have anything else?
Oh, no.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Now we're adjourned. Now we're adjourned.[594.79]